Good morning, everyone. I'm going to call this August 1st meeting of the Board of Supervisors to order. The Board of Supervisors made by motion recess into executive session to receive legal advice from the Board's attorneys on any item contained in this agenda pursuant to ARS 38-431.03, A34, and 9. Official business to come before the Board. Discussion possible action, review the proposed plan for hand tabulating the ballots for the 2024 elections, and adopt, modify, or reject the proposed plan. Manager Elters.
Good morning, Chairman, Board members. On June 5th, the Board directed staff to form a plan to hand count the 2024 election and return the plan to the Board of Supervisors for consideration and approval. Staff has been diligently working on that. We do have a completed plan to present to the Board today. And without any further ado, I will ask our Election Director, Alan Tempert, to step up and present the plan to you. Thank you.
Hello, Chairman Lingenfelter, Board. Thank you for this opportunity, and I truly mean this. I learned an awful lot from what I went through today. As a matter of fact, I didn't really learn a lot. I confirmed a lot that I already knew. So this was pretty darn good. You know, it was a good little exercise. I also want to thank all the people that came in the audience today to see this. I truly mean that. No matter what your viewpoint is, okay? I'm glad you're here to do this because I've never had such an audience show up before for anything I did before, so. All right. I mean every word of it. That being the case, I would like to start with. Yesterday, I was in Vegas, and I was picking my wife up at the airport. So I want to make sure she is here. It's Mary Pat. She's over there in a blue. That's the Board, if you don't already know them. And we went to dinner, and it happens to be her birthday today. What a birthday gift. And we went to PF Chang's, and I got a fortune cookie. And it said, "Your ambitious nature will lead to many rewards." PF Chang. I really hope that to be the case. All right, now that being said, it took close to two months to do a study, to write it up, to vet through it, it's a cool word, vet through it between my staff, my part-time staff, my full-time staff, County Attorney's Office, County Manager's Office, and it came down to an 11-page study, we'll say. And really what it comes down to is can you, okay, Alan, give me a plan. I was asked to come with a plan. I was asked to come to a plan to say to hand count the ballots for the 2024 general election. All right, simple enough. Coming up with a plan, simple enough, right? There were basically four things that I came across. Now, I know that you all have read what I did. We did an executive summary, and then it was a 10-page backup, you know, detailing all those four different points that I came up with. And there's got to be other points in there that would say what, you know, what could happen and what happened. This is just what I could come up with in that timeframe, which gave me a lot of time. But the four points were the confidentiality of the tally prior to Election Day if we were to hand tally ballots, timeliness of results if we were to hand tally ballots, the accuracy of the results if we were to hand tally the ballots, and the estimated cost of the hand tally process. They're all very important. Some people are going to fixate on one thing more than another, but they're all very important. What I truly believe is there are statutes and laws and rules and procedures from the Secretary of State's Procedures Manual that discuss things that you can and can't do. Everything's not spelled out in black and white, that's a guarantee, but things you can and you can't do on certain types of things. But there are certain things, like for the first instance, confidentiality of results. This one really bothers me, just to let you know. Bothering me an awful lot. Confidentiality is no results of any sort are allowed to be released prior to 8:00 PM on Election Day is whenever the last person has voted or one hour after the elections is before you can release any type of results. Got it? When we run ballots through tabulation machines, there's only two people in this whole place that know anything what the results could be, and that's my Deputy Director, Steve Harris, right there, and myself. If I have people hand tallying results, I cannot guarantee confidentiality, no matter what piece of paper you have them sign to say, "I swear I will not." You know about confidentiality? It's really important, and certain things don't get out there. I got two good examples. What if, for D-Day, right? Think about this, that those young men going over on the boats knew where they were going prior to that. Do you think maybe somebody might have known, and it could have tipped somebody off what was going on? How about the Manhattan Project? Boy, did they surprise the Japanese, didn't they? Right? It mightn't have been that way if somebody, if people would have known something they shouldn't have known in advance. And it's obviously impossible to get hundreds of people together to do hand tallying and for them not to go home and tell their husband or their wife or their best friend or something or another what they had seen what's been going on all day long. Second of all, timeliness of results. Statutorily, the primary election and the presidential preference election, they have to be canvassed within 14 days after the election, which means all votes have to be tallied, all write-ins have to be tallied, everything else will be done and submitted to the Secretary of State's office by that particular time, within 14 days. That would really be pushing it. But in this plan I have, I have talking about people tallying in ballots, not prior to Election Day due to the confidentiality that I just discussed. I have it discussed starting the day after the election. And that's an awful lot, it's an awful lot of work that has to be done in a short amount of time, considering we had 105,000 ballots for the general election of 2020. Now, the general election gives you 20 days, between six and 20 days to canvass the results. It's still an awful lot of ballots to get down in that amount of time and get things done correctly and reported correctly with all the mechanical parts that need to be done. The accuracy of results. I don't know what reports people are going to be calling from behind me and saying, "They have reports that hand counting is lower accurate than machine counting." Whatever. It's not true. I haven't searched wide and all over, but of course I've looked around and have seen. And the only places we found in the United States from the literature we pulled up that actually hand count ballots to some degree are jurisdictions with 1,000 registered voters or less. We have 150,000 registered voters. It's 150 times the amount of people that can and will cast a ballot. I don't see any other jurisdictions nearly our size who do something like that. We had a test deck. It took three days, 850 ballots that I knew the true and correct results were because I used them in the general election. I tested them for weeks for the general election, knowing what every dot meant and what every vote was going to go where, and it came up each time, okay? I have people in the audience back here, some of my part-time staff, wherever they're at, there they are over there, who helped me out with this process. They helped me count 850 ballots, and it took them three eight-hour days to count up to 36 races on a ballot, because that's what was on the ballot, approximately 36 races on the general election ballot, and every single race is important, from the president down to the precinct committee person. Every single one of them needs to be treated as every other one is. So it took them three days, and they made mistakes. And of those mistakes, there were 30,600 races approximately that they had to hand tally, and it took them three days to do it. Forty-six races, they made an error. They would have had to go back and find them. I know what the errors were. I know where the errors were because I had the test deck, I had the control group. So there were 46 errors just in those 850 ballots to begin with. And you know what? This group of people we got back here, they're the people that do my early ballots. I've had some of these people ride for 10, almost 15 years. I call them the dream team, like basketball team when the NBA players went to go start playing in the Olympics. They are the best. They do a great job. They are so committed to this, they're just not people off the streets. I got a dedicated group of about 20 people that do this. And another thing, to get this group of people to do this, I did group of seven, as we're going to see in a report. Seven people tallying, one person to call the vote. This is why this is important, I got to discuss this. One person to call the vote, two people to watch the vote, one from each political party, as a matter of fact, to make sure that the person calls the right vote because it may not read straight out what one thinks. We need somebody, then we need two people to be marking separate tally sheets, and at least one person to be watching to make sure they put it in the right spot, because that leads to incorrect call, that leads to incorrect tallying errors, you know, across the whole board. That's how we came up overall with the 46 race errors on the 850 ballots. And now we come to the cost of the process. We thought this process out and this cost out. I didn't just make something up, throw a dart at a board and say, "I'll bet you it's going to be $1.1 million." People behind me are going to say, "He is absolutely insane, saying it's going to cost a million dollars to do this." That's larger than my budget for the whole year, to run the whole election for the whole year, is to do a year's worth of hand tallying. Okay? But if you look at the figures and the amount of people, and it's mainly personnel expenses, to put everything together, to pay people minimum wage, and we're going to say, "Oh, we have volunteers for you, Alan." You know what? I've been talking to other volunteers. I could only get seven people out of my 20 people to come in for three days to do this because they got other things to do with their lives. And I didn't short them real quick. So I would need people to show up for three straight weeks, seven days a week, eight hours a day, in the perfect scenario, to get 105,000 ballots tabulated by hand. And they would all have to be showing up, but it's not like, "Oh, no, no, I got to go and pick up my niece, or I got to do this, or I got to do that." They got to be totally committed to it. And then once they're doing this, how do we make sure the information doesn't disseminate? What do we do? Do we sequester them like they used to do with juries years ago? You know, I mean, that's ridiculous. I'm just throwing something out there so that this information doesn't get out there because I know, and you know too, so many times in my life, I've had people come up to me and say, "Why am I even going to vote on the..." They've already announced who won the president, back east, they've announced it. There's no reason for me to even go. Well, that could be a very similar situation to people knowing what's going on and who's winning. That being the case, that's the whole thing in a nutshell, okay? I know you, some of you all, if not all of you, want to get down into the details a little bit more, and that's what I'm here for. So please.
Thank you, Alan. I'll open it up for questions to the Board. Any questions from our Board members? Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Alan, are you going to go over your plan now that you've given us your comments?
I will go over my plan.
Thank you, sir.
Absolutely. I will try to summarize the plan, you know, because of all the little details, but what we would do is we would conduct, we would, I might have to jump through here a little bit back and forth. We would have to first start by recruiting 250 people or something, somewhere in the area, whatever, 254, 256, whatever, whatever the math came out to, which is in detail, the number of people needed per hours. A ballot takes three minutes, a ballot to tally, that's with errors and stuff like that. A 36-race ballot takes three minutes to do that, you know, approximately. We did between two to three minutes, two and a half minutes, up to three minutes. So we would get boards of seven. We would get almost 40 different boards of seven together to do this. We would have to recruit that many people, but I know I would have to recruit at least twice that amount of people, if not more. That's the one I threw a dart at, a dartboard at. I have no idea how many extra people I would have to recruit. There's no way I can hold anybody hostage seven days a week for three straight weeks, eight hours a day, holidays, Saturdays and Sundays, to sit there and do this process. Nor would I would have to try to find the people to do that. I don't see doing it any other way except starting a huge human resource recruitment process. Right about now, we're down 100 people in the county to begin with for full-time jobs that pay salary and benefits. I'm going to be looking for filling a couple of hundred people that become on our salary to be background checked, to be paid at least minimum wage. I have done 15 bucks an hour, which is slightly more than minimum wage. I just threw that in there, you know, to come up with some numbers, to hire people to come on and do this process three times a year. The general election by far would require more people because it's just more ballots to be counted is really what it comes down to it. The prime, followed by the primary, and then the PPE, the Presidential Preference Election next March, okay? The Presidential Preference Election next March, let me just tell you right off, it's not the same as these elections. It is a one-race election with a number of candidates that I would predict up to possibly 40,000 ballots being cast if both the Republican and Democratic Party participated in it, okay? It's not a true test of what this really is. It's something that could be done. It's something that could be, if we're allowed to do by hand, I'm not even going down that road right now, okay? I'm not the legal guy. If we're allowed to tally by hand, that one could be done because I could do that with a controlled group of people. My people back here that I pointed to before could do that, okay? They could do that after they prepared the ballots and ready to go, but that would be showing one race. They could fly through ballots because it's one race in tallying, and it would be pretty correct, okay? It's not going to be the case for the primary or the general election. So after we recruited these people, we would have to, this would be a whole year process. I would have to bring on another staff member to do this. I mean, a full-time staff member. They would have to be absorbed into my system. They would have to be a project manager. I could even visualize this. We've got two departments. We have the elections department, and we have the hand tally department. Basically speaking, this job would just be astronomical to try to put together all these people. Now, a lot of these people in the audience out here are volunteers. I just know it. I'm looking at it, and I know a lot of you, and you're volunteers, and you volunteer, and you do when you can, and you do, and you work things around to do for the best. I got it. Hi. This just isn't, you know, it's not, it's part of that. We won't not be able to, three hours here, four hours there. I was speaking with one of my staff members recently, and I said to him, I said, he said, "You know what? I can't do that." First of all, I don't have the attention to do this anymore, you know? It's just too tedious, and it's a very, 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 very tedious process. That's why all the errors have occurred in my group in three days, okay? And also, oh, by the way, I can't work Tuesday, and I can't work Thursday, and half a day Monday because I got to be at the hospital Monday morning working.
Alan, can I get you just to go through the report?
I'm sorry. It would have been. I don't drink coffee, but imagine if I did, Senator Borelli. Okay, yes, thank you, Chairman. Okay. So we would recruit the workers. We would hire the workers. I'm saying the perfect world right now, okay? We would have all set in place. We would use the fairgrounds. We need a large enough venue to be able to do this, right? Fairgrounds, right? What's down at the fairgrounds? Went and got a estimate. We would need to have cameras, an infrastructure put in there to handle that, to get the cameras, cameras, everything has to be recorded, everything has to be broadcast streamed live, as in our tabulation room is right now. It's an estimate, a very good rough estimate is between 90 and 100 grand. I had people down there just this last week to say, "Well, what if we put in 40 cameras, be hanging in all the different rooms to keep the separation from people?" You can't have people working right next to them calling out names. That does not work because people start hearing things, you know, picking out wrong names and such. So we would have to basically use the whole fairgrounds building type of thing. That could work. Some of it echoes pretty bad. I would have to maybe think about some sound muffling things and stuff because I was in there talking across the room, but that was 90 to 100 grand, I was told by the people that do camera stuff, is a really good estimate. So we would have it down at the fairgrounds. We would have to transport ballots back and forth each day, you know, with staff. We would have to have security guards to do. Being at the fairgrounds, we would have to also have them help transfer back and forth, and people from the political parties transfer ballots back and forth with us every day. I'd never leave ballots down there, of course. I would take them down every day. I would see that they were back every day that we were doing this process, okay? I would, what really gets me though, let me get back to, we'll say, the people that would help count. You can't all have one political party count. You would have to absolutely positively have as even a number of people as you can, the ideal perfect world, like we do for the voting polls, okay? Voting polls, we recruit about 350 people, takes us all year to do it, to work one day, one 14-hour day, and we can't even fill all the polls doing that. Enough said on that, recruiting people to help out. Talked about the venue. The composition of the tally board members. You throw in people unlike security guards, I said, you need to have them around, 24-hour surveillance, but not down there when we're not there without ballots. I had the cost pretty much laid out, and I'm guessing that would be a really good cost, you know, I just didn't, it was, were very well thought out. And then we get down to the point about automatic recounts. Automatic recounts. They changed the laws, was it two years ago, Senator Borelli, or four years ago? I think, I think it first took effect last time, okay? Really good idea. I'm a fan of that, how we ended up count the Attorney General's race again. We were able to do that in less than four days. Back on the tabulation equipment, the ballots were all prepped and ready to go and what have you, right? We would have to count every ballot again by hand when this would happen, and it's not when or if, it's not if, it's when it happens for as many races that will have to be recounted each primary and/or general election because the laws were changed to make it much more likely to happen, and that's okay. Who cares if I think it's okay? But that ties into this process. So I just had in conclusion, and we would have to hire a new full-time staff member, 245 tally workers, 30 people to do write-ins. I forgot about the write-ins. Every ballot has to be touched a second time, and it cannot be done at the same time. Believe me, that leads to errors. Writing candidate needs to be acknowledged on every ballot. Think about that, 105,000 ballots to do that. We have that done automatically now with the tabulation equipment. It pulls out the write-in ballots, and they're ready to go. So that makes, it's a huge difference. We need 56 people for the recon board. Prepare the security for the fairgrounds, the transportation requirement. So I have it down to allocate approximately $1,108,486 plus the recount cost of $31,360 outlined above to do this. But what I also got to say is this, we can't just get people, we have to keep the same people consistently. This is my biggest, this is my biggest concern, besides confidentiality. I really am on that one. But there's examples, there's ways. There's, as I put in the backup, there's a two-sheet adjudication, well, one sheet, adjudication, we made it one sheet, adjudication and duplication of ballots on the very back of the report that I did. There are certain rules about what a dot, what an X, what a this, what a that it means. It's not all common sense. We have to teach, my board back here that does this has to learn this really, really, really well before they do it, and they work in groups of three to make sure that they do it right when they're adjudicating any ballots for any kind of marks or mismarks, which the machines pick out to show us that. When these people are counting or tallying these by hand, they would have to do that and pick that out as the call goes on and have to know what this means. So I can't train people every single day before we start to do it. So that's it. I hope that was thorough enough.
Thank you, Director Tempert. Any other questions from the Board? And then I'll open it up to the, calling people up to speak. Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Alan, did you take a look at a model of counting ballots at the polling place?
I did not, and I can tell you about that. A long time ago, that was the only way to count ballots when there were no machines. So ballots were counted at the polling place. Now, but think about this. They counted ballots at the polling places years ago, and Mojave County was prior to 1960 because I got a sample ballot on my wall. This is 1964 primary election or whatever, where they were using a paper ballot, you know, so that time on, after that, shortly after that in the 70s, I know we had lever machines because I got one of those in the office or two, right, to just know historically, right? We never had that many people living in the world at that time, and that means people voting and such. The ballot was also a lot less ballot issues. There were a lot less offices on the ballot back then than there are now, if you look back historically. So it was possible, it would have been really big, to have 50 people vote in a polling location many years ago. They would close the door, put on the coffee. I heard stories from people that used to work for me 25 years ago in Pennsylvania about that, and we would put on the coffee, and then we would start counting the ballots, and then we would write down the answers, and we'd give them to the sheriff, and we'd deliver them to the courthouse, okay? deliver them to the courthouse, okay? I have polling locations in Mojave County that cast twenty-three hundred ballots. I have people that we, that start at five AM, and then they're done, the polls close, and then they're there until eight or nine o'clock, closing the polls up, and then they're going to sit down and count two thousand ballots. Eight hundred and fifty ballots for three days. It just isn't going to work. I'm just, it just isn't going to work. It's not made for the day and times. That's why they made machines. That's why they made punch card machines, that's why they made lever machines prior to that. They had little things that looked like abacuses prior to that, you know? All the way up until now, they have electronic machines to count. So it's not a possibility to do. I could never... May I turn around one second?
Sure.
How many in this room is a poll worker? Did you sit there and count ballots election night?
Yes.
After you've worked thirteen hours. Oh, come on. Bullshit. Okay.
Alan, we consolidated precincts, what, ten years ago, maybe? We had seventy-three precincts in the county?
Twenty sixteen, we did. We had seventy-three voting precincts. We did.
And we consolidated those because?
We consolidated those for, well, we consolidated those for efficiency, uh, technology with electronic polling books. Electronic polling books is the re, is the real key. Poll books allowed you to check people in, okay? It's definitely a good thing, as opposed to using paper rosters, which means that we took...
But the reason that we went to electronic polling books is for vote centers, and if you don't run a vote center, you don't need an electronic polling book.
That's not why we went and did it. It's much more efficient in uploading election results and people's voters, not results, wrong word.
That's not what they told me when I was a state senator and chaired Judiciary Committee, and the bill went through.
And what, and what did they tell you?
Told, told me it was so we could go to vote centers.
What did they tell you?
Told me that that was so we could go to vote centers.
We didn't go to vote centers.
I know, because I won't let you go to vote centers, but...
Efficiency, you're right. And it's efficiently run.
Because vote centers just create another point of failure. Now you can't run an election without electricity or the internet. And that, I believe that that's some of the problems that we're seeing, is we've created multiple points of failure. So I think you'd be more apt to be able to do the, do a hand count if we went back to having seventy-three precincts, where you had smaller precincts, neighborhood precincts, where the, the poll workers are more apt to know the people that show up in their precinct. That would give you, but you still got to raise, you got to get the number of people to do it.
That is true.
But there's, if your name's in the book, that, uh, you signed your name, you showed them your ID, you signed your name next, uh, next, you signed next to your name in the book, and then you, you didn't need the electronic poll book.
You didn't need it. You didn't even need it before that. People knew everybody wasn't, you didn't have to sign anything in before that. But you're right. You're one hundred percent correct. It's not a requirement, but it makes the world go more efficiently. So you're right. If we went back to seventy-three precincts...
If it works correctly, it makes it more efficient.
If we went to seventy-three precincts, if you really want to get down to it, if we went to seventy-three precincts, or even more, double it, okay? Double it, or make it three hundred precincts, then you could have people showing up at their local places, and there could be, there'd be a hundred people, they would cast a ballot, but imagine the complexities trying to get that all to work out. And the people back here are all willing to go and do it. Yay! Yeah, there you go. Will be there doing it. But it's not the way, uh, yes, you could.
Thank you.
Supervisor Bishop, did you have a... Nope. Supervisor Bishop, did you have a comment?
I'll let Supervisor Angus.
Okay, Supervisor Angus.
Alan, I attended one of your test ballot counts, and you're right, it is tedious, it is long. I don't, I don't think people understand some of the nuances of it, such as, how many, how many races were on that ballot?
Thirty-six.
There were thirty-six races, and if they come in, I'm just trying to take you through, I was hoping you were going to explain this in the report, but when they come in the mail and ballot, right, go through that process. The ballot is taken out, the signature is verified. The way it is now, you just put it in a pile, and then it all gets separated into its own precincts or in its, its own election areas by the machine, right?
That is correct.
So i, it's not, tell me if I'm wrong, it's not just a matter of taking them out of the envelope, verifying, and then counting them, because every ballot is different. So you can't, like, you can't have a group of seven, and then you put these ballots in front of them, because they're all different races. So you would have to separate them first into?
That is correct.
Is that why you're saying that it would probably make the most sense to do it after the election, instead of the run-up? Because one of the things that we were hopeful, and what we heard was, we will have this time before election night, the run-up to the election, the thirty-day, twenty-eight-day period where we vote, to count every day, right? And then there are issues with that, and, and I agree with you on the confidentiality. That, that is a problem. That's a problem. And, um, but that is sort of my concern, and when we did this, um, this test, we had lawyers in the office, and we haven't, so the elephant in the room is the legal aspect of this, because we've been told a whole lot of stuff about the legality of this by so many different, I don't know if this is the time, or you want to go into it after, but I, I would like to ask our lawyers about the legality of that.
That's what you wanted to ask.
Yeah. Because we've been told a lot of things from a lot of different, um, people about this.
Next one.
Chairman Lingefelter, members of the board, I'll give you the quick answer. The quick answer is, it's, it's up in the air, it's questionable whether it'd be legal to do a hand count. But I can say with hundred percent definitive certainty that doing the, doing the machine procedures that we've been following and the procedures is one hundred percent legal. I'll, I'll first now explain my answer. It's questionable for this. There's nothing in state law, there's nothing in statutes, there's nothing in the manuals that say, yeah, you can hand count, and this is how you do it. What the, what the Elections and Procedures Manual does say, that if it is impracticable, if, if counting at the counting centers is impracticable, then you can do a hand count. That's really the only reference that you'll see in the Elections Procedures Manual. Now, to highlight the fact that this is questionable, recently, there was a case before the Arizona Court of Appeals, and this, they're addressing a different issue, they were addressing the issue of whether the hand count audit, whether you can expand the hand count audit. You may recall that debate that was taking place in Cochise County. Well, during the oral arguments, the justices, the judges said, well, can you do a hand count? Can you do a hand count from the beginning? I mean, they asked the lawyers that, and each lawyer for each side had different answers. One answer, one was, well, under sixteen four four three and sixteen four four five, you can do it. The other lawyer said, well, under these, you cannot. And so it's up for debate. It is currently being up for debate. I can tell you the different arguments. The arguments for a hand count, if you look at sixteen four four three, sixteen four four three says that you may use machines. Well, the implication is that if you may use machines, that means that you can do a hand count, right? That's the implication. That's sixteen four four three and sixteen four four five. But if you look at sixteen six oh two, and if you look at the canvas statute, the canvas statute says, uh, the tabulation from the electronic machines, it will eventually become your canvas. So they're suggesting that you have to use the machines. And if you go to the manual, if you look at the manual, it talks about counting centers, because we have counting centers. That's different from what we were talking about earlier, but a counting center is where you count the votes. And it details all the different procedures that you're supposed to follow using the machines, and how the machines are used, and that kind of stuff. It doesn't tell you about how to hand count. So you have, on the one hand, people will argue and say, well, there's the implication that you can do hand count, and we've been doing hand counts since, I mean, hand counts started when the state was founded. At what point did we suddenly say it was illegal? We don't know, right? But on the other hand, if you look at the statutes that we have read, and the various different things, it talks about using machines, it talks about using the machine here, the machine needs to be used here. We have to follow the Elections Procedures Manual, it's required by law, statute makes it very clear that we have to follow that. And if you look at that, it says you can only do the hand count if it is impracticable. Again, that's really the only reference there. And so it is, uh, it is up for debate, it is questionable. We have our concerns about the legality. I have another attorney in the office who has spent an enormous amount of time looking into this, and he has serious concerns about the legality of it, and I share those. We have, we debated it even amongst ourselves as to what we think on this. Ultimately, the advice we can give you is, it's up for debate, it's questionable. But what I can say you with one hundred percent certainty, that if you follow the procedures that are laid out in statute, that are laid out in the manual for using machines, that is legal. Now, whether you wish to do it or not, that's for you guys to decide, but I can tell you from a legal standpoint, what is stated in statute that has been passed by the legislature, that has been adopted by the Secretary of State, those are legal procedures, and the use of the machines is legal, and you, I, I cannot see how somebody would challenge you for that. And if they did, I think that we would be very successful in defending that action if you use the machines as been recommended by the, uh, by, by your elections director, and our office as well recommends that as well. Does that answer your question? And I'm, I'm happy to answer more questions.
One, one follow-up to that. We floated the idea of doing both. Doing the hand count, then running them through the machine. I mean, one of the issues everybody has is that you don't believe that the machines are correct. So this would show whether that idea is correct or not, and then I was told that you can't do both. It's one or the other, which I don't understand why that would be. I mean, do we have any say, do we have any authority over our own elections at all?
Well, yes, you do. But let me back up just a little bit. The authority that is given to the Board of Supervisors is the authority that the legislature has expressly given to you. The county, the Board of Supervisors only has that authority that has been specifically delegated to you from the legislature. That, that's very clear, that, that, that is law that goes back a hundred years, where we can, the county can only do what the legislature has specifically authorized. And so to your question, can you do a hybrid of sorts? The legislature has not authorized that. We, we don't see anything in the legislatures that say that it authorizes that. So that's why we're more confident to say, yeah, that's not something that you need to be doing.
But it doesn't say we can't.
Correct. But it also says, it doesn't say we can't, and the, and the law is clear that we need to do what the legislature has specifically authorized or by necessary implication. That's, that's kind of the key phrase here. What the legislature has specifically authorized or by necessary implication, because, because it's not, everything is spelled out. But if there's a necessary implication, that's necessarily implied that we can do something, then that would be what we'd be authorized to do.
Would this ever be a possibility, it would end, it would end up probably in the Secretary of State's office to decide, or the Attorney General, and unfortunately, we know who controls that? Would that, would that be where it would end up? I'm just, I'm saying, I'm saying if they challenge us, where it would, I'm just talking procedurally.
Well, anybody could...
Yeah, if I could ask for decorum, I understand that there's strong feelings on this issue, but thank you.
Chairman Lingefelter, members of the board, Supervisor Angus, I imagine that somebody would challenge us. Would there be a lawsuit that likely be filed against the county, private citizens, private groups, Secretary of State could join that. I don't know where the Attorney General would, would land on that, I don't. I, I can only, I can only guess where that would be. I, I will say something to consider is, by law, the Secretary of State is required to update the Elections Procedures Manual, I think it's every two years, I'd have to double-check the statute, but I believe they're in the process of doing that right now. So come January, we will have an updated Elections Procedures Manual, and I imagine by that time, there may be more clarity on this front as to whether the counties can do hand counts or not, and I imagine, I'm just guessing, but I imagine they will likely address that in the Elections Procedures Manual.
Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ryan, I believe that the twenty-two election was run on the nineteen manual.
That's correct.
That's correct, because the current governor, when she was Secretary of State, did not update the manual as required by statute. The statute always is supreme over the voter manual. The voter manual is a negotiated document. It's put out by the Secretary of State, but it's negotiated on whether those rules apply to statute or not. So you always want to go to statute over the voter manual.
If I could respond to that?
Sure.
Generally, yes, the, the statute will trump, and there was a case, twenty-twenty opinion that made clear that, that the manual is required by law. There, there's a specific law that says you have to utilize the manual, you have to follow the procedures, but anywhere where statutes conflict with the manual, the statute will trump, which is the statute, you need to follow the statute. So that's correct. But I do need to emphasize that, that following the procedures, it is required by law that, that the counties follow the procedures as long as they're not inconsistent with statutes, and, and you'll see that occasionally, and people have challenged that. And failure to follow that is a criminal offense. It is a criminal offense to fa, to fail to follow the Elections Procedures Manual. So that's, I just, I say that to carry the weight of the importance of that manual and the procedures in it. You're correct that it was not adopted in the twenty-twenty-one, leading up to the twenty-two election. There was legal issues, and they challenged it, there was a lawsuit over it, and, and ultimately, I'd have to double-check what the, what the court ruling was, but essentially it was, we're going to stick with the twenty-nineteen, because you never worked out the twenty-twenty-one one, and that's why we're with the twenty-nineteen still.
So with the manual being a negotiated document, if you had a Secretary of State, and you had a governor that did not want to do a hand count, then when the Secretary of State wrote the manual, they would write it out to reflect against the hand count. So I don't know that the manual not allowing a hand count is really something that we need to, need to fall back on. I think you could argue that, that since the twenty-two election was run on the nineteen, nineteen manual, that, I have to look at that court case, but I think it's problematic. So I don't know if the mere omission of a hand count in the manual precludes you from doing a hand count.
Like I said, Supervisor Gould, I appreciate the comments. There is a reference in the manual about hand count, and it, and it says that, that you do the hand count if the other procedures are, if, if it becomes impracticable. So what, what is impractic, impracticability? That's subject for debate, I guess. But I, I would say that in the event the Secretary of State, the Attorney General, and the governor approve the manual, this upcoming, it should be in January, when, when it would be published. If there is information in there about the hand count, our recommendations would be to follow it, because it's in the procedure, and less than until somebody challenges that, and we have a court ruling saying otherwise.
So do you think that would be necessary to do a hand count if we can't get machines that meet the cybersecurity rules?
I would follow, what I would say is that we would need to follow what is laid out in statute, and if it, if it meets the requirements laid out by, by statute, then we should use the machines. That may differ than what people, or people believe what should it be, but, but we're going to follow what the legislature has decided. If the legislature has said these are the standards, and it meets the standards, then we need to follow those.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. We're going to get into some request to speak forums now.
It'd be nice if I could speak.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I thought you had not wanted to. Supervisor Bishop, excuse me.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. So I noticed our esteemed sheriff is in the back of the room, the undersheriff, the chief deputy, a couple, I see a lieutenant, a deputy. I wore that same uniform for many, many years, and I believe in the rule of law, and if you don't like the rule of law, what do we do? We get our representatives to change it. So our state representative, John Gillette, he used to wear that uniform, so he understands enforcing the laws. He may not like them, but when you take that oath of office, you support the laws of the state, of the country, and you support the Constitution, the US Constitution, the Arizona Constitution. Alan, is there, is there anything in statute that specifically authorizes counties to hand count? I mean, maybe that's for the county attorney. Can we, by law, do the hand count? And you've already explained that, so, you know, it's, it's up to debate, kind of looks like we can't. But if we go ahead and do it, then I think we're opening this board in this county up to litigation. Whether we win that litigation or not is another debate, but my question is, Mr. Attorney, But my question is, Mr. Attorney, if charges are brought against this board, are we each individually held liable? Excuse me, liable? Or is it a defense if a board member votes against a hand count? Or are we all held to the same standard? That's my question.
It's a difficult to answer. But I mean, generally speaking, individual members of the board are not going to be liable for the actions of the board. The board is making a decision collectively. There are various different immunities that board members have, and you're aware of that. So if somebody votes yes or no, you're not going to be going after one individual member. It's just generally, that's not how it operates. I don't know. It could be complicated. But I would say, generally speaking, if a board member says, you know, this is how I wish to vote, then they shouldn't be held liable for something like that. It's a collective board decision. It's a board decision. The board makes it. And so the lawsuit would be against the board, against the county. They may name the individual ones, but I don't think that they'd be individually liable. But I will admit, this would be a difficult question and one that we need to research further.
If this scenario should happen and a lawsuit is brought against this board, this board goes against your recommendation, would you still represent the board? Or would you step aside because of the county recorder then being involved in voter registration? Would we each have to hire our individual attorneys? And will county taxpayers pay for our attorneys?
So the model, I mean, we try to look to see how other people have acted in this regard. The most recent one is the Cochise County situation. And in that one, Cochise County, what they wished to do is they wanted to expand the hand count audit after they'd already been counted. So it's the back half that they wanted to expand. And they voted to do that, two to one. I think it was a three-person board. They voted two to one. And at that time, the county attorney for Cochise County said, we can't support you in this. We don't recommend this. And so they stepped aside. And it was a conflict because who were they going to represent? The recorder didn't agree with it. The Elections Director didn't agree with it. The board, they all had different opinions. So if I recall correctly, the Cochise County attorney stepped out because it'd be a conflict to represent any one of the three. And so they each got attorneys for each one. There was private attorneys for each, for the board, for the county recorder, and for the Elections Director. And I imagine those were at taxpayer expense. I don't know. I can't say for certain, but I imagine they were, but the county attorney was uninvolved. I will say, the county attorney's office takes its responsibility seriously. By statute, it is the county attorney's responsibility to defend any actions taken against the county. And we take that seriously. And we try to do what we can to defend the county. And we will. That being said, we do have ethical obligations. And if we feel that something is meritless, if it doesn't meet certain criteria, then we will not represent the county. I can't say right now whether we would represent the county in this if the board decided to do a hand count. But I can say we would have concerns about it. And we're telling you now, we do have concerns about our representation of the county if you took that route. But it's tough. Sometimes in law school, they'll talk about being on the horns of a dilemma. On the one hand, we have a duty to fulfill our statutory responsibility to defend the county against lawsuits that have been filed against the county. On the other side of the horn, on the other side, we have an ethical responsibility to not take any cases that we think are meritless or do not meet certain criteria. And so this is kind of in the middle here. Is this a point where we'd say, we can't do this? Or could we still continue our duty? It would be challenging. You also have to consider too, and with all due respect to our office, you may not want us to represent you. I mean, we would try to be zealous advocates, but at some point, if your own attorney has some doubts about the representation, you may want to consider having somebody else who has the expertise and has that zealous advocacy to do it. So you may have to consider that as well.
Okay, thank you. I think Senator Borelli has alluded to the fact that he has lots of money for defense attorneys. So that's an option as well. So my last and final question, Mr. Chairman, is we're looking at an $18 million deficit going into the next fiscal year. We're going to have a discussion on whether or not to have monthly meetings to try to figure out how to make up $18 million. Do we really want to put this county in a position where we're going to have to be talking about $19 or $20 million deficit? And believe me, I don't think we can cut enough fat out of our budget to come up with that amount of money. So maybe County Manager Elters could chime in on that about the budget? Can we afford to do a hand count legally, financially, morally?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Bishop, we presented a FY '24 budget to the board in July. The board approved it. We informed the board of our concerns for FY '25 budget deficit. That took place before this discussion. So we're on record in telling the board where we stand with our budget. If the board decides to do hand count and it adds $1 million to our deficit, that would be one more million that we would have to mitigate. You laid it out clearly. I don't really have anything to add other than it would be that much more money added to a deficit that we've already discussed with the board.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the discussion, the debate, and the applause from the audience. But I'm retiring in one year and five months, and I don't want to spend that in litigation. Thank you. Chairman Linkenfelder.
Supervisor Angus.
May I ask one question for Alan?
Alan.
Alan, the way this works is that there's all this oversight by the political parties. And there's always the question, we rarely get enough Democrats for our hand count audit after the elections. What would happen if we couldn't get the number of Democrats that we needed for this? Is just putting out the call for it enough? I mean, if we don't get the numbers that we need, what happens?
Chairman, I'm sorry. Can I just shortchange that? I can give you that answer real quick, if you don't mind. So currently, under the count centers, the central counting procedures, which we currently have, you have to do this today. This already has to be done to different parties and stuff. But the manual specifically says here, it says, "If it is impossible to sufficiently staff the boards with members of different political parties, the officer in charge of elections shall, at minimum, exercise best efforts to utilize board members with no party affiliation or affiliated with unrecognized political parties to ensure that there is a diversity of political party affiliation on the boards and that no board is comprised of members of only one party. Further, the county recorder or officer in charge of elections shall document when and how the political parties in the county were contacted about the need for board workers affiliated with those parties and all other actions taken in a best effort to obtain board workers from two different political parties. However, nothing in this manual shall be interpreted to supersede otherwise applicable statutory requirements." So the short answer is, if you can't get enough from the other political party, then you try to get the non, the no-party affiliations or unrecognized political parties. You try to fill that as best you can. You try to do the best you can.
All right. We've heard from three of our board members. Supervisor Johnson, would you like to make a comment before we go to citizen comment? Okay, thank you. Sean Meisner.
Hello, good morning. Hello, Board. My name is Sean Meisner. I'm running for District One Board Supervisors. Yesterday, I went to the Elections Department and I checked out the voting machines for myself. I wanted to see them because I have doubts as well. Steve showed me a ballot that he marked up and messed up on purpose. And he put it through the machine, and it actually ran 100%. I was impressed with that. The only thing that I didn't like with the voting machines was, okay, in the voting room, everything is secure. There's no internet, okay? You take the voting machines, it goes into a general computer. They take a flash drive, plug it into the computer, take that, put it into the network, send it to the Secretary of State. My question is, where does it go after it goes to the Secretary of State? That's the only doubt that I have as far as the election machines go. As far as a hand count, I'm definitely for a hand count. I'm a veteran. And as far as working eight hours straight, we can definitely work eight hours straight, right? We can work 24 hours straight. It doesn't matter. But I went and looked at those machines for myself because I want to know the truth. Okay? Let's see here, anything else? That's pretty much it. I just want to let everybody know, I went and looked at the machines myself. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Glenda Irwin.
My name is Glenda Irwin. I am a retired federal employee, a civil servant, like you folks. In the 2016 election, I was honored to be a volunteer for the observation of counting of mail-in ballots. I observed democracy at its best. Democrats and Republicans were represented equally at every step of the process, including Alan and Stephen entering stacks of ballots into the counting machines. And by the way, the Republican candidate won that election. There was no outrage from anyone demanding the end to the use of those machines. The machines that were used for that election and for many elections for years prior to that were once again used in the 2020 election, where the Republican candidate lost. And all of a sudden, those machines are not to be trusted? Is Mojave County going to follow the ridiculous and expensive actions which took place after the 2020 election? This would be just another silly and expensive demonstration of how people in power can attempt to create the illusion of efficiency while once again making Arizona, and specifically Mojave County, actually look like fools. Thank you for the opportunity to voice my opinion and for listening. And I hope that you will consider what I have said before making your final decision.
Thank you, ma'am. Elaine Downing.
Chairman and Board, good morning. I'm Elaine Downing. I'm the Chair of the Mojave County Democrats, and I live in Lake Havasu City. I am also a retired federal employee and a veteran. You had a question earlier about the number of Democrats. You were talking about workers, I believe. You guys are obligated to find the workers. It is the Republican Chair and the Democratic Chair that have the responsibility of signing up observers. I have to say that I've been the Chair for a year, just a little bit over a year now. And I was running around like a chicken with my head cut off as I took the chairmanship in March of last year, 2020, 2022 election. And it was difficult to find people in this large county that wanted to observe, that were willing to observe for more than a couple of hours, let alone all day long. And it's a 14-hour day, not an eight-hour day. And then you would be asking people to stay and count hours after that. When I, we never have a problem finding enough people to participate in the hand count. Not that I've seen. It is the long election day that is probably the most problematic for us and the three weeks of early voting, for observers at least. Workers too. But I try to send people that think they can work the longer day to the county to help fill those, you know, positions if Alan's having problems finding people. I've been involved in the hand count several times. It has always been human error, always. The numbers have always matched. Alan runs a tight ship in that hand count. And when John Glenn was trying to figure out how he was going to come back home, that first time he went up in space, if you saw the movie Hidden Figures, you trust, but you verify. And that's exactly what our process includes right now. We do it by machines. They separate. They put them into all the different buckets that got to go. And the human people do their job. And the machines are the first primary. They count them. And then the humans come in with bipartisanship. We sit there all day long. It's usually a day and a half. And we verify. And I challenge you to consider that we're already financially in the hole. This would not be the correct action to take. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Jeff Rider.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. The single biggest thing that I hear in my, I'm the District One Director for the Mojave County GOP. And the single biggest thing that I hear every day is about election integrity. Alan has pointed out, and he's done a great job, no doubt about that, but he's pointed out every reason why we shouldn't do this. I'm going to give you one reason we should, and that's because it'll put confidence back into the electorate, because it's at an all-time low right now. That's the thing nobody else has talked about yet. So not doing it, I think the cost of not doing it is much greater than the financial cost of doing it. Thank you.
Okay, Senator Borelli, you're up.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, if I may. There's a lot of stuff here to unpack, so I hope you'll give me the liberty of extending my time. You know, I just want to go on the record. I don't like creating this kind of havoc. This is not about Trump or Biden, Hobbs or Lake. This is a national security issue for me, pure and simple. You lose an election, you lose an election, if you lose it fairly. And, you know, I'm glad you brought up, Alan brought up some good stuff. And you know what? Alan runs a tight ship. And I'm not questioning his integrity or his staff. I'm questioning the system itself that has the flaws. You brought up a good thing, a good point about confidentiality, about the, you know, the Manhattan Project, atomic bomb, D-Day. Wow, those were very successful operations. Again, national security. The problem with the system is the logic and accuracy tests only prove that the system is operating properly at the time of inspection with test ballots. predetermined outcome. The problem is when it gets in through the system, a computer system, a black box, you don't have that ability of transparency to examine, to make sure it happened. Now Cochise County, they made that effort to do a post-election 100% hand count of all their precincts. And the Attorney General, actually the Secretary of State interfered and tried to intimidate the board. The board wasn't going to be intimidated. They vote two to one to go forward. And then the Attorney General sued. Attorney General lost. That's what's actually being in appeal. So let's get down to the point on that. It's for post-election. This is prior to the election. This is the election process. Bottom line is, you're not allowed to even look in the black box. Because in order for you to do that, you have to have the source codes, which is eschewed by the Secretary of State's office. We tried to get it during, when the Senate did the audit after the 2020 election. Secretary of State would not cooperate. And even Dominion would not cooperate with a subpoena because they're a private company. We couldn't, we had no authority over them. So that's where we are right now. As far as an NDA, staff, people sign an NDA, if they leak that out, it's a felony. I don't think somebody wants to risk a Class VI felon- I don't think somebody wants to risk a Class VI felony just to say, I know the outcome. But this is pretty much purely a logistical operation or method. Yes, I agree. It took them hours and hours to do 800 ballots, seven people to do an entire ballot. I propose, hey, he made a perfect example, the presidential preference. There's only a couple people, a few people on that ballot, you only count one race. That's what I propose. A team for every race. A team for every separate race. May I have some more latitude, Mr. Chair?
Thank you. Uh, go ahead, Mr. Senator.
Thank you, because you want to go get a speeding ticket by the sheriff here. Um, and County Attorney brought up a very good point about the constitutionality about the legislature. Senate current resolution 1037 specified on page three, line 38, excuse me, line 28, whereas Article One, Section Four, Clause One of the United States Constitution empowers the state legislatures, including the legislature of this state, to prescribe time, place, and manner conducting federal elections. If we're talking about the presidential preference, that would actually comply with the federal, with the SCR. Electronic voting systems are manner. In the SCR, I highlighted and documented problems that we found in other states, the Haldeman Report, which was commissioned by the Democrat Party to do an examination of electronic voting systems prior to the 2020 election. The Election Assistance Commission identified an anomaly of erroneous code in ESNS system in Tennessee and the cybersecurity infrastructure, CISA. They found the same thing, that the erroneous code was there, but nobody knows how they got in there, but the company says, but we fixed it. Well, how do you know? We don't know. And when you have other political organizations in these so-called executive branch or the judicial branch that's trying to intimidate you from doing your job, your elected duty to make sure that you trust, but verify, I think that's atrocious. It should be all hands on deck. Elections don't belong to us, elected officials, they belong to the people. And if the people want to step up, volunteer, and do a hand count, they should be allowed to do that. Now, the law does not prevent a hand count of an election. It doesn't prevent it. I mean, the law says you, if you're not 21, you can't smoke. If you're over 21, the law doesn't say if you're 21, you can smoke, just that if you're under 21, you can't buy cigarettes and smoke, you can't drink, you can't vote until you're 18. These are things that prevent, but the law does not prevent a hand count. So I'm glad you brought up about the constitutionality, because the SCR complies with the U.S. Constitution by the legislature, not the legislature and the executive branch. It says the legislature, not the legislature and the governor, it says the legislature. And it was passed by unanimous vote, excuse me, by popular vote, um, by majority vote, excuse me, by majority vote by the House and the Senate, and it has been transmitted to the Secretary of State's office. So therefore, you have your, you have your legal cover. As far as the logistics goes, um, and Mr. Temperance said it's going to take about 275 people to do this, or 260 people to do a hand count in a, in a, in teams of seven people, which is not bad. I think that's more than enough, I think it's way too many, but, um, but we have over the county, the Republican Party already has 300 people already signed up, and we haven't just, we haven't started yet. So I ask you to consider at least proving that the presidential preference can be done. And that, that could be the display right there, this is how you prove it, logistically it can be done. I don't see how the county has to pay for renting the, the county fairgrounds when the county owns it, so I'm a little bit confused on that. But anyway, I'll take questions.
We'll, we'll call you back, we have several speakers here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Wayne Hollins?
Mr. Wayne Hollins? I'm Wayne Hollins, Golden Valley Chairman, Supervisors. I've been here for about eight years trying to get things done within the county to make it a better place for the people to live, and I've told you several times, I thought that we could be, set the example for the state on many things that we should be doing, but yet we fail to do them. And now, we don't have a problem, because obviously our elections official still works here, we don't have a problem, so we want to make one and then fix it. We can't fix the other things. How in the hell are we going to fix something that's not broken? You know, I, I look at that flag back there and I, I am exasperated by the far-right. We made laws since the last election to make it harder for people to stand in line to go vote and making them have to stand in line to go vote. When you fill out the dots on your ballot, wherever you're at, whether you're at home, you're at the poll place, when you run them through the machine, they all count the same. If I gave my vote in an envelope to somebody else to take it to the mailbox and drop it off, or wherever they drop it off, did that change my vote? No, the voting, the illegal part of voting should be, you taking other people's ballots and filling them out and taking them in and turning them in. That's the part that should be illegal. Everybody should have an equal chance to vote, and we should have our vote counted. Voting and getting them counted by hand does not give me any confidence that it's going to be done correctly. People make mistakes. Machines, the mistakes were programmed into them by the people. So the people who want to cheat will program the machine. So I would like my vote counted during the same election that I vote for, not for the next one. Now, if we can't figure out any other problem that we can fix, I can probably sit down with you and help you find some that we can fix. You know, a million dollars to count 100,000 votes, well, that's fine for Mojave County. There's, what, 5 million voters in the state and how many in the whole United States? We're going to hand count all the votes of 200 million people for a million dollars?
I need to call the next speaker, it's okay. I gave Senator Borelli an additional...
Yes, you did, and I'm just as good a fee as.
So now, you know, I gave him another minute for courtesy as an elected official that's representing everybody in here in Legislative District 30, that's why I didn't...
He ain't representing me.
How much more do you need? Another minute, two, three? I mean, we have several speakers here, sir, come on.
Lunchtime's coming? Give me a break.
I'm calling the next one, Jamie Morgan.
Good morning. My name is Gemm Morgan. I'm the Executive Director of Real Change PAC. We are a nonpartisan, issue-focused PAC. Um, I want to start with, I've been reading this book by Parker Palmer, Healing the Heart of Democracy: The Courage to Create a Politics Worthy of the Human Spirit. And it's just a very short passage. It says, "We must protect people's freedom to believe and behave as they will within the rule of law." So I want to talk a little bit about the rule of law. So this is from the United States Constitution, this is the elections clause, where it stipulates that the time's place and manner of holding elections for senators and representatives at the federal level it's specifically referring to shall be prescribed in each state by the legislature thereof, the state legislature. So the manner of holding federal elections is a states' rights issue, as defined by the United States Constitution. It's a states' rights issue. Arizona exercises its constitutional right to define the manner of all elections in Title 16 of the Arizona Revised Statutes. So this is in the Conduct of Elections, Article Four of Chapter Four. What you see here is an entire section on voting equipment, in particular, vote tabulating equipment. The focus is on equipment. So the statewide standard practice involves voting equipment and vote tabulating equipment, not 100% hand count. Now, I want to, I want to state again here that everyone has the right to believe what they want, but we must act in the rule of law. So the bottom line is, it is unconstitutional for Mojave County to usurp the state of Arizona's right to define the manner of Arizona's elections. And more importantly, every citizen of Mojave County has a fundamental right to have our votes counted in the manner prescribed by the United States Constitution and outlined as standard statewide practice in Arizona state law. Now, once again, because this is a states' rights issue, this Board is in violation of open meeting law, you are trying to conduct business that belongs to the state. It is also in violation of your oath of office that you will uphold the Constitution and Arizona state laws. We will be filing another complaint, and if you vote to have this 100% hand count, you will be sued, which is unnecessary. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Now, please, everyone, I need to ask for decorum. There's going to be a wide variety of opinions expressed this morning, and we just need to be respectful of everybody. You don't have to agree with it, okay? Please. Barbara Pape?
Good morning, everyone. I'm here to protect my vote. It is my freedom to do this, act. I've had a one-on-one conversation with Allen Temperance when he presented the electronic counting programs and machine voting systems several years ago, and I can't remember. I debated with him and asked him, is this electronic counting program and machine system going to be accurate, and can you guarantee this happening? He responded that he could not predict this, and that's, that was the best comment that I could accept. I told him that I do not see this happening right away. Well, today, here I am, speaking to all of you, our responsible Board Supervisors, hoping that all you know that some of these electronic counting programs and machines did not work properly on the days of primary and general elections. There are findings of manipulation, programming on some of the electronic counting machines, and some were not checked. These machines should have been checked and verified before our election. At this point, please agree to change to hand counting and manual counting. And as, as was presented by Senator Borelli, I urge you all to protect my vote and, and be responsible for your constituents. Thank you very much for your time to listen to my concerns.
Thank you, ma'am. Chris Rodarte? Chris Rodarte? Don Martin, you're on deck.
I'm Chris Rodarte, Mojave County taxpayer. We are on the verge of losing our republic. I'm old enough to remember the 2020 and 2022 election debacles. Ironically, as a result of early voting, mail-in ballots, machines, our votes no longer count, and as a constitutional conservative, I am in favor of hand counts. In fact, I have a six-point election integrity plan. One, in-person voting in small neighborhood precincts. Two, voter ID required. Three, no more motor voters. Four, paper ballots counted by hand in the precinct were cast. Five, absentee ballots only for military, elderly, or the ill, requested in writing by the voter, no mail-out ballots. And one day voting on Election Day only. It worked for 200 years, and in the 1960s, we knew the results before midnight. So let's take the money spent on mailing out ballots and processing them through machines and put it towards hand counts. Better yet, let's go even further and consider major cuts to, or even the abolition of the health and community service departments and health departments of the county and save the county $30 million. How about that? We could balance the budget and preserve our elections. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Don Martin? Don Martin and Logan Marsh, you're on deck.
Good morning, Chairman Lincolnfelter and Board. My name's Don Martin, I'm, I live in District Four. Um, this has been a very interesting meeting, to say the least. I think there's been a compelling presentations by both sides, and you guys are going to be faced with a very, very tough decision. I got to just add some comments, so that, you know, we are a nation of laws. We also are a nation where everybody can feel free to speak what they feel, and there's obviously people here that feel that the hand count system is the best way to go, there's other people that feel that, that the machine system is okay. A lot of this, and for me personally, I look at the people that are involved in these things. I've known Allen Temperance for 100 years, and, and if there's anybody that I know that's involved with elections that knows things, it's that guy sitting right there. And I, I would, I would challenge the Board of this. You, you ask him to present a plan, you ask him to come forward and say, tell us what this is going to cost, tell us what it's going to do, is there any pitfalls in going to the hand count system? And he did that. And whether you believe it or not, well, that's a decision you all are going to make. But I would, I would say this, you have a guy here that could probably get a job in any county-state in the United States because of his integrity and his, his ability to solve issues, and nobody questions him. Look at Mojave County. Do we have a problem in Mojave County with how the votes were counted? We're a red county, and I'm damn proud of it, but, and I don't think we had this big issue about votes being changed and everything else. And a lot of that's probably attributed to that man right there, the way he does business. And like I say, you got a tough decision, and I understand why Senator Borelli is looking at changing this, I truly do. But I think we got to look at the big picture. I've been coming to these Board meetings now for a long time, and I keep hearing about this, one thing about this fiscal deficit that we're fixing to get to the tune of $18 million. When I hear Allen Temperance say it's going to be a million dollars more than, as our county manager said, that's going to be an additional challenge if that's the way you want to go. So all these things have to be considered, and, and like I say, I truly understand... And like I say, I truly understand the difficulty in the decision that you're going to have to make today. And I think all the voices ought to be heard, pro and against, whatever. But like I say, just, you know, think about this. Think about the people involved and the issues that they brought up that are absolutely legitimate on both sides and make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Logan Marsh.
Chairman Lincoln, Felter, board of supervisors, thank you for having me. I'm Logan Marsh, candidate for District 4. I've done a lot of research, read lots of studies about hand-counted elections. Some interesting studies I'd like to point out. A study published by the Election Law Journal in 2018 analyzed data from the 2012 and '16 U.S. elections and found that hand-counting elections votes resulted in fewer errors in voting machines. The study conducted by researchers from MIT and Caltech MIT Voting Technology, which is a predominantly left organization, need I say, found that error rates with voting machines were double those of hand-counted paper ballots. Additionally, the report from the Brennan Center for Justice in 2020 found that hand-counting paper ballots is the most secure and transparent method of voting because you could physically watch it. The report highlights that hand-counting allows the most trustworthy audit. It allows for the public observation, and it creates a physical record that is not subject to hacking or programming error, which is the whole reason I think we're here. I heard Senator Borelli talk about national security. Our vote and the fact that I take my time to go out and vote and vote you guys into place, vote the president into place, that's a national security item. And I hear that our votes are being counted by a machine that could be hacked from anywhere, even though they're not connected to the internet. Somehow, they got hacked. I'm concerned. These findings suggest that hand-counted paper ballots may be more reliable than conducting the elections the way we currently do. I do hear about the deficit here in Mojave County. I do have my own concerns about that. I haven't put together any plan on how to get out of this deficit, but I'm open to it. But I think it is a national security issue if we're not voting the right people place in, and it's being hacked, and somebody's being established. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Pat McBrager. I might say this wrong, I can't read really. Pat McBrager? Thank you.
It's Pat McBrier.
Thank you.
Chairman and fellow supervisors, thank you for giving everybody the opportunity to speak. France has 47 million voters. They all use the hand count and paper ballots. Germany refuses to use voter machines. Why is that? Because of fear of voter fraud. Somehow, in the EU, they're able to complete the task in a timely and accurate manner. We don't need excuses of why we can't do this. We need leadership that can get the results done in a timely and accurate manner with paper ballots. Mojave County needs to be a leader on paper ballots. If we don't get it together, then on the 2024 election, we're on the verge of losing our constitutional republic. Our rights are being challenged daily. Without free and fair elections and with voter fraud and cyber insecurity, this great country is doomed. I will serve as an overwatcher and go through the training. We, the people, need to have confidence restored in our election integrity. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Steve Timonello.
My name is Steve Timonello. I'm a resident of Mojave County, spoken to the board many times over the past couple of years. I'm the media relations director for Sheriff Mack and the Constitutional Sheriffs and Peace Officers Association. And I would like to ask a question. If there's anyone here today that thinks there's a computer on planet Earth that cannot be hacked, I'd like to see their hands. You know, 18 years ago, back in 2005, I became part of a group of patriots that went to Washington, D.C. We sued the federal government for the first time in the history of the United States under the First Amendment, petitioned redist grievances. And one of our grievances was the electronic voting machines. We were featured in the movie America: From Freedom to Fascism. And in that movie, a judge asked Clinton Curtis, a DeBolt executive that became a whistleblower, can you manipulate the vote in these machines? And he did not hesitate one second. He said, "Absolutely, Your Honor, and you will never know it." That was 18 years ago. Last summer, July 19th, Sheriff Mack wanted to have a press conference, a national press conference on election integrity because we agreed that without honest elections, we will not have a country. So we had a big press conference in Las Vegas. We invited about a dozen constitutional sheriffs. Mike Lindell was there, Patrick Byrne was there, Catherine Engelbret and Greg Phillips of True the Vote that were featured in the 2000 Mules movie were there, and Tina Peters, who was the Mesa County up in Colorado, the county clerk that was shown that her machines were being manipulated by Dr. Doug Frank, who was the statistician working with Mike Lindell. And we have been working with Dr. Frank all this past year. In fact, I spoke with Tina and Dr. Frank down in San Diego a couple of weeks ago. We brought Tina Peters to Mojave County to the Republican picnic this past weekend up on Walupai Mountain. And she spoke. She's going to be on the Speak Out program with Paul Voight today at 11:30. I wish I could have Tina here with us. She's been texting me back and forth all during this meeting. But we do not have any security with these electronic voting machines. You know, we saw during the scandemic, we saw that we gave up liberty for security, and we got neither, as Ben Franklin warned. Now we want to give up liberty for convenience? I don't think so. Thank you.
Katrina Callahan.
Hello, my name is Katerina Callahan. I'm just a hairstylist, so I might not be as important as Mr. Borelli, but hopefully you'll still hear me out. This proposal to hand-count votes in the next election is estimated to cost over $1 million. And I, for one, do not want my tax dollars spent perpetuating the baseless narrative of voter fraud, nor the expensive potential litigation that follows. According to the Associated Press, numerous studies have shown machine counting to be generally twice as accurate as hand counting. And while no system is perfectly infallible, I'd say the data is definitely in favor of the machines. I encourage those who question the validity of the current process to volunteer at the polls and go see for themselves. So if this will be more expensive, more time-consuming, and less accurate, then what on earth is really the point of it? Well, how about we just call it what it really is, which is pandering? That's all that's going on here. This is simply virtue signaling to your predominant voter base here in Mojave County as a means of furthering some political careers and getting on the radar of some other big-name politicians that have pushed the voter fraud narrative. I find it an insult to my intelligence that you all think we can't see through what's really going on, and I'm opposed to it.
Thank you, ma'am. Karen Mascato. Karen Mascato.
Good morning, and thank you for allowing us to address this proposal to add another $1.1 million to our already $18.5 million debt in Mojave County. I represent the thousands of independent registered voters known as indivisible here in Arizona, and I'm pleased and honored to be able to address you. I find it very sad and almost unconscionable that you, such an esteemed body, is entertaining a $1.1 million price tag for an error-prone system in which there are no facts, no facts, to support such a change. You all know our elections are safe, as you all were fairly elected, correct? What I find more objectionable, though, is the fact you knew our county was in debt, and you still are entertaining this conspiracy-led theory that our voting mechanics are corrupt, when you know we have never had an issue here in Mojave County. I would just ask that you use your time that we, the people, are paying you for to figure out a way to get out of debt without passing it on to all of us, which this proposal will absolutely do. I just believe the people of Mojave County deserve better than this. And we deserve a fiscally responsible Board of Supervisors, which I do believe in my heart. That's what you want as well. So I really hope that you consider this as important because it truly is. And it not only affects you personally, of whether or not you get a lawyer or not, it affects all of us who pay our taxes, who live in Mojave County, and who want the best for our county, our state, and our country. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Teresa Evans.
Members of the board, my name is Teresa Evans. I'm a poll worker, and I am a citizen of Mojave County. I have three questions for you. But first, I'd like to address one thing. Several weeks back, I was at a convention in St. Louis for one of my volunteer organizations, and we got around talking about elections for some reason or other. And I mentioned that I worked it, and somebody made a comment about I used to work elections in Pennsylvania. Do you know a gentleman by the name of Allen? Allen Temperet. Allen Temperet is noted for his integrity, honesty, and dedication in running his department. He is well-known in many states, as that proved, as one of the best, if not the best, in how he runs his elections. Ms. Angus, you made a comment on the day that we were supposed to certify the Mojave County election as the first time in many years that you didn't have any phone calls, yet you denied the certification. I would like to know why, in the 10 or so years I have worked elections, we have had clean elections, and suddenly you want a hand count? Is it because somebody that we know lost an election? Senator Borelli? Excuse me. You worry about election integrity and security and national security. Where were you in 2016 when Russia allegedly interfered in our election?
Order.
My election experience at $125. I didn't interrupt you.
Order, please, order.
I did not. You asked about trying to get volunteers, work people, poll workers. Let me see. You have four hours of training. You have an 18-hour day. You have harassment. You have intimidation for $125. Do you think that's fair to your poll workers? We have a budget deficit. Why? I have no idea. I don't want to know because that would probably make me angrier than anything else. But doing a hand count at $1 million is ridiculous. We work those boards. I am proud to say I am a Mojave County poll worker. I also work with Allen. And I sat there for two days. I should have been there three, but unfortunately, medical problems. But these people put their heart and soul into these elections. Where does anyone say that our elections are fraudulent? They're not. You were elected. Prior presidents were elected. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Lori Olivia. Lori Olivia. Jeanette Lucas. Jeanette Lucas. That's all the public speak forums we have today. Any other comments or discussion from the board? Supervisor Agus.
Can I have Senator Borelli come back up again?
Senator Borelli, will you come up to the podium?
You said that you kind of went over it fast, but you said you thought that there should be separate groups counting for each election, for each race, I mean, for each race. So how many hands would touch these ballots? That's my concern. It would go, you know, we need to minimize that, is what I would think. How many hands, how many times these ballots get touched?
Mr. Chair and Supervisor Agus, I'm proposing a team for each race, whether that be five or seven, with Mr. Temperet would desire, you know, which puts him in the driver's seat of total supervision. So you actually have three people counting. They say candidate A, one person over on the left, one person on the right, not parties or whatever, but they're observing, and they tally. And of course, Mr. Temperet's process is the other extra two people are to verify that they're documenting it properly. So you do, let's say, example, you do a presidential race, 100 ballots, takes minutes, a stack of 100. Then you shift that over to another team. They do another race, like a Senate race or congressional race, so on and so forth. But you have a team, separate teams for each race, and you rotate them around every other day, whatever. You don't have to use the same people. This way, you can kind of like make sure you maintain some security. But that's how it should be.
I don't know if I agree with that. But you also said the presidential preference.
Right, would be a good, yes, Mr. Chair.
And I agree with that. I think that if I was to do anything today, I would say that would be a good way to test it. We can test to see if it is a viable way. Even Allen himself said that that would be the way to go because it would be, there's one race. I mean, again, when I looked at, when I did that test, I was one of the few people who actually did the test. And it was very complicated and very tedious. So if you have these ballots that have just one race, just that, then we could kind of, would we be able to run it through on the presidential preferences? Is that still under the same laws? So could we do the hand count and then run it through the machine? I'm trying to get to a point where we can show people if the hand count and the machines come together and, you know, it shows the same results, maybe we can put some of the people's minds at ease about the fear and that they don't trust the elections. That's really what it's all about, is trust.
Mr. Chair, may I address, or is that a question?
Well, I was asking about the legality of doing the hand count or doing the, running it through the machine first and then doing. And I know that's what's going on with, you said that Cochise County won that, right? So they're allowed to do the 100% hand count after the machines?
No, they've not. It's not over. No.
That's post-election, right.
Yeah, but that is still being litigated. No, they lost at the trial court level.
Oh, okay.
They appealed it to the Court of Appeals. The Court of Appeals has not issued a final ruling that. They've issued a draft opinion, and the draft opinion affirms and denies, but that draft opinion is subject to change. We're still waiting. but that draft opinion is subject to change. We're still waiting for the final opinion on that. That's very clear. Like, that just happened, just a couple of days ago, the oral arguments. So that's one thing. The presidential preference election, it says, going to statute 16241, "The presidential preference election shall be conducted in canvas in the same manner as prescribed in this title for the primary election." So you're following the same procedures that you would have for the primary election. So the same things that I said previously stand true. We would have concerns about doing a hand count, even if it was for a presidential preference election, because there is no statute that authorizes the county to do that. And there's just nothing in the statute that gives us those things. So it's the same analysis before. It's up in the air. It's the same thing that applies to primary, but also applies to presidential preference election.
But if we did the presidential preference, it would be an indicator of what will happen. Will we be sued? Who's going to make a point of it? All those unknowns that we keep talking about, that we won't know until we actually did something. There's a lot to this, back and forth. And, you know, I listened to what everybody said, and you all have great points. You do. This is something very important to a lot of people, to the country. And we're taking this very seriously. And I still don't even think we have all the information we need, but that's really all I have to say.
Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The problem with limiting the hand count to merely the presidential preference election would be that you would not have enough time to do it in the primary election and the general election if you chose to move forward. So if we're going to do it, I think we should go ahead and move it for the entire 2024 election cycle. If we decide that it's a failure at the presidential preference election, we could then go back and go back to a machine count. But you couldn't go the other way, because that would not give them enough time to recruit the number of people that we need to do the primary and the general. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion.
I'd like to ask a few questions, if I may, first Supervisor. Senator Borelli, I, first of all, thank you for being here today. Thank you to everybody that's here today to share your views. I know that there's strong views on, across the whole political spectrum on this. But I just have a few questions, if I may. You know, when you look at the last presidential election was lost by 10,475 or 57 votes. The governor's, last governor's race was lost by just over 17,000 votes. The Attorney General's office was lost by 280 votes. The last US Senate race for Arizona was lost by almost 79,000 votes. You know, why not have, first of all, additional voter drives in Legislative District 30? I know Legislative District 30, when it turned from 5 to 30, was redistrict a little bit. And there's a carve-out. There's a portion of Maricopa County, which is Wickenburg, Arizona, that's a part of Maricopa County. So there's your N. Why not have some additional year-round voter drives to get increased voter participation? Because in conservative areas and things like this, because I think you could make up those types of narrow margins. I mean, you could go and say, look, I represent the voters in Wickenburg, Arizona. It's a part of Maricopa County, which is a part of my Legislative District 30. And there was voters in Wickenburg and surrounding areas. We're disenfranchised by what you did here in Maricopa County. And, I mean, so I just don't understand why you're here and not down there, when we've never really had a problem with our elections. I'm not done. From what I've seen, the problem is in Maricopa. They had equipment failures on Election Day in Maricopa, substantial equipment failures. The problem is having to stand in line in Maricopa County for over three hours to vote, when you only have an hour at lunch or before and after work to vote. And then some of the other things that we've heard today about same-day voting, minimizing mail-in ballots, all those things I think are excellent ideas, but we don't have that authority. That sits in the lap of the Arizona Legislature to solve those things legislatively. We can't do anything about those things in Mojave County, because in Arizona, the Legislature passes those rules. The thing that I really, you know, even if I want to support you and what you're doing, and our conservatives here with a hand count, the thing that I can't get around as a conservative Republican is the fact that Mojave County has, right now, a projected 18.5 to 20 million dollar budget deficit. And unlike the state Legislature, you know, when it's forecasting a deficit, it gets itself in the black by pushing its red to the counties and the cities. Counties and cities, we can't budget like that. We can't take our red and push it farther down the line to a different political subdivision. So what we're going to do, as a possible solution, and you'll see it on our agenda, the 7th of August agenda, is, starting in the third week of August and every month thereafter, until we get it figured out, we're going to have special meetings to go through this budget crisis. And we're going to go through every single budget for every single department. We're going to pick through it, and we're going to try to find some cost savings that all five of the board members can agree with. But it's really a stark situation, because when you look at Mojave County's budget, it's a conservative budget. And we're faced with trying to cut as much as we can, which we're certainly going to do. You could have three members vote to raise property taxes as much as they can with just a simple majority, and that would take it to just under $2 per 100. I'm not going to vote for that. Or you could have a whole board, just academically speaking, raise property taxes here over, well over $2 per 100. I don't think that's the right solution. You can completely eliminate the capital improvement projects budget, which are projects for sheriff's office, the court system, attorney's office, the mandated services that a county has to provide for the state for criminal justice. That might help one year. It's not going to help in subsequent years. So conservative Republicans, they don't, they don't lump on another 1.1 million dollars on top of an 18 to 20 million dollar deficit. I mean, then we're no better than the federal government and the Democrats that have been in charge, and they're giving money out here, and they're giving out money here, and it's just the deficit keeps growing and growing and growing. We can't budget like that here in Mojave County. So, I mean, I'm willing to have further conversations about this, but the first thing that we have to do in Mojave County, in good conscience, is to balance the budget. You can't talk about any other spending when you have 18 to 20 million dollar deficit. I mean, that's irresponsible. So. Did you have a comment, Supervisor Gould?
Mr. Chairman, I move that Mojave County adopt a hand-count method of tabulation of ballots for the 2024 election cycle.
I'll second that.
You've heard that motion and seconded. Any additional discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion fails. We have a second item on our agenda today. Our county recorder, Kristi Blair, is going to provide a presentation by Mojave County about the Voter Registration Information Database, its roles with voter registration within Mojave County and the state of Arizona, and how it is different from the Electronic Registration Information Center.
Mr. Chairman, do we need a motion to reject the hand count?
I don't believe so.
Not necessarily.
Recorder Blair, thank you for being with us this morning.
Thank you, Chairman Langenfelder. Board, that's a really tough act to have to follow, you know. Over the course of the past few meetings, I just wanted an opportunity to share with you the Avid, our voter registration system. I think last meeting, I actually had addressed the difference between Avid and ERIC, but I just, I likely provided more information than necessary, but I never know, you know, what has value, so here we go. Well, they told me I just had to push the button. There it is. Okay, there we go. Sorry. So I'm just going to do a little background and overview. The voter registration, the statewide voter registration system, actually came out of the Help America Vote Act federal legislation in 2002, requiring a statewide system be adopted. This current one, the Arizona Voter Registration Database, was launched in 2019. Launched in 2019, took several years to get that implemented. It's a top, you either have a top-down, a bottom-up, or a hybrid system. Arizona has top-down and hybrid with two of the counties using their own system. It's a live transactional database, so oftentimes, if you're asked to run a report, it's at the time that that report is run. It's difficult to capture something in the past, although you can do a date range, it's not as accurate. All Arizona counties use the statewide system. 13 counties input and maintain directly into Avid. Two of the counties operate and maintain independent systems, but they have to be able to interface with the statewide system as a federal requirement. So part of the overview is I'll just be addressing the access, the voter registration, the statewide election management, the new component to Avid, which is how we pinpoint voters rather than on a street base, so we know exactly where every voter resides in Mojave County. And then just the ability to do an amazing amount of reporting. So only approved networks have visibility to Avid. Each person that has access to the system has their own unique UBI key. So there's a two-part authentication to even be able to get into the system. So, you know, you can register to vote by a paper form at MVD in person, by AZMVD Now online with a login, and then Service Arizona. And then those are passed into the Avid system. The MVD ones are done daily. Service Arizona is in real time into the database. Lot of information here. Basically, the system checks for proof of citizenship. It runs it through what we call a HAVA check, which is the Help America Vote Act. We have the capability to move voters from county to county in Arizona. It used to be that if you moved from one county to the other, you got a new voter ID number. And now with this system, voters, they still have to register in their new county. But they, their ID number can follow them. Their voting history can follow the voter. It maintains the active early voting list when you request a ballot by mail, as well as the removal, the cancellations, the deceased felon incapacitated out of jurisdiction. It creates correspondence and tracks that. So if a state statute requires notification and a response is due within 35 days or whatever is statutorily required, the system can track that and then puts it into a dashboard so that we know when the timeframe is to send whatever correspondence that may be. The system allows us to see every transaction done. It allows us to be able to see what was changed, who changed it, if it was a Mojave County person making that change. All of that information is provided in the database. And then personal identifying information, that's not allowed public. A lot of the reports automatically will extract the information that is not allowed by law. I think it's really important for people to know that the system is only as good as the information that were provided. So we may not know that a voter has moved or is deceased. We require people, when they receive a ballot or correspondence from our office that has the official election mail notification on there, that they not throw it in the trash, because eight years later, it's still going to be going in the trash. We need something to let us know that, you know, right on the envelope, deceased, not at this address, something. When I get mail that isn't addressed to me, I return it and put, you know, not at this address. That gives us the ability to generate the statutory requirement of notification and to follow the procedures that we are required to do. Just because a voter is deceased, we still have to require, like, a second notice. And a lot of that is the NVRA, National Voter Registration Act, on a federal level. We have strict criteria of what we have to do. And the benefit of the system is that it sort of can alert us, and we can generate the necessary correspondence that we need to do. So we have resources to know things about voters, but it's really important that the voters themselves return, inform us of what changes are actually occurring. All of our mail will have the official election mail logo on it. We used to be able to trust that more often, but we saw in 2020 that parties were putting that on their mailings, which sort of takes away the ability for voters to see official election mail and know that it actually comes from our office. So the, like I said before, the database can track the active early voting list. We do not decide for any voter who gets a ballot in the mail. That is the voter's choice, and that is the voter's decision. A lot of times, they don't realize that they checked that box, but we would never issue a ballot to anyone that hasn't requested it. The database tracks the ballots by mail and early voting. It processes, we process the provisional ballots through there, and then issues the voting credit to the voter so that we have that history of that they voted. I'd like to just make a key point about the ballots, by law, have to be received in our office no later than the 33rd day before an election. Well, we're sending ballots to our vendor approximately six weeks before an election. That explains why people often say, well, I got more than one ballot in the mail. Something transpired to where those ballots had already been sent to the vendor, were already queued, and then they changed their address. Something occurred to where another ballot had to be issued. No two ballots are active at any one time. If you go to an early voting site and you got a ballot in the mail, but you decide to vote right there, the system, that ballot is automatically canceled. And each ballot has a ballot ID number, so we know that which ballot is actually active. So you'll hear voters say, yes, I, you know, I got three ballots in the mail. Yes, but only one of those ballots is going to be able to count. So if you're in that situation and you say, why did I get two ballots? The best advice to give is to have the voter contact us. The system really is a roadmap to be able The system really is a roadmap to be able to explain where, where a voter is. So early ballots are mailed, and early voting sites are open 27 days before an election. We fulfill the two-party representation, and from the moment we receive ballots, there's a chain of command that we, we strictly enforce. Once the ballots are received, we put them into batches of 50. When we first were developing this system, it was, well, just, why do you have to have batches? Well, if, if there's a problem with a person's ballot, it's much easier to go into a batch of 50 to find that, that ballot than it is 90,000 of them by hand. So it, it's just something that we do. Future elections, instead of the Avid showing that your ballot was accepted or rejected, the legislature has a, a, a different thing where we will be processing ballots, and we'll have to dedicate a person to do this. Once the ballots come in, they'll be scanned as received. So then you'll know that the ballot has been received in our office, and then the next process, after the signature verification process, it'll be accepted or rejected. It's important, I think, for voters to know that it's not an instantaneous process. We hear voters say that my ballot didn't count because they went to an early voting site, they voted, and then they went online to MyArizonaVote, checked the status of their ballot, and, oh, well, I guess my ballot didn't count because it's not there. Well, it's a process, and it can take up to a week, depending on where we're at in the process. So I always recommend that we be given some time. Ballots are processed as we receive them. Of course, a hand count would, would change that. The voter's signature is required to be on the affidavit envelope. Without the signature, we cannot accept the ballot. We do a lot of work behind the scenes to contact the voters, call them, email them. Oftentimes, we start with about 800, we might wind up with about 40. We do a really good job of contacting the voters, sometimes multiple ways, sometimes three, four times. We, we try very hard to do that. And I think that the importance of, of addressing that is because everything that is happening is going through the system. Once the signatures are verified and the ballot has been accepted, the ballots are transported to the Elections Department with two-party representation and chain of custody, and they're in sealed totes, transported for the early board to then be separating the affidavit envelope from the ballot. On Monday before Election Day, we stop processing all early ballots, because we are doing an upload into the e-poll books for Election Day. Once that upload happens, we don't process any more early ballots, because we want that information to be accurate. So we're usually, the only ballots that aren't counted before Election Day in early voting are the ballots that come in the mail at 4:00, and the ballots that are dropped off on Election Day. If a voter gets a ballot by mail and chooses to drop it off on Election Day, that's when you're gonna see the delay, because those early ballots still have to all be signature-verified, and the system will alert us if they put in a ballot, but then maybe were unsure, and they went on Election Day and voted. That voter isn't going to be recognized as voting twice. It's, it's one or the other. So there's a whole process to the early ballots after that. Once the election is done, the information for the voter history is uploaded back into the Avid voter registration system, and then we'll proceed and finish off any early ballots that may still be out there. We do all the early ballots, and then we'll process the provisional ballots. Provisional ballots are always the last ones to be processed. That's because we want to ensure that no Election Day, our early ballot was already submitted. So the other delay with the canvas is that by statute, voters have, depending on which type of election it is, has either three or five days to respond to either a signature verification issue, we, we couldn't verify that that ballot belonged to that voter, or on Election Day, they didn't have their proof of identification. So that's why, even after Election Day, depending on the election, there's three or five days that we have to wait by statute in order to complete all of the ballots that we received. This is a screenshot out of the system. I've removed all the identifying information, but this is a screen of the early ballot process. It'll tell you what the election is. At an early voting site, the, the workers are putting this in. If you've had a ballot issued and you show up at an early voting site to vote, that mail ballot, the, when they go to process the early ballot at an early voting site, that mail ballot is automatically canceled out of the system. So it would show as a ballot status, of course, of canceled. We know when the ballot was received, we know the batch ID number that we put it in. Each ballot has a ballot ID number on it, so that if a voter calls us and says, well, I got two ballots, we can go in here and we can say, well, you changed something. So we can show that this ballot ID has the canceled number, so vote the, the one that is active, and we can, we work with the voters with that, being able to get them to the correct ballot. On the voting history after Election Day, so that we know how the voter voted, since 2022, we now identify it more, so we know that you voted early, and actually, you just dropped it off at the Administration Building. We know if you voted at the library in Lake Havasu City. We found that that is more advantageous for the voter, that if they say, well, you know, I, there was a discrepancy, we have followed that, and we know where, where that voter So a new thing to the Avid system that I really like is the fact that it used to just be street-based. We would put a voter in because, yeah, we had this address range from, you know, 20 Beale Street to 200. Okay, we just put you in there because that's unidentifiable now. So it's called total address, and it will put you in the right precinct, it'll put you in the correct district, and it, it gives us the ability, we're still, you know, sometimes come across them, but if somebody tries to register to vote, because it has to be by residence address, in order to understand what ballot to issue them. If they try and register to vote at a storage unit, or a tattoo parlor, or something, we'll know that that's a commercial address, and we will contact the voter, asking for where they're actually living. And we can do that by point, GPS points, longitude and latitude, because we know that sometimes people are out there. This is a screenshot of the system, and each dot indicates where a voter is located. And then as you expand in, it'll tell us, you know, there's two voters there, four voters there. And then when you click, when you select that dot, it comes up with who is that voter, and what precinct they're in, what their Board of Supervisor district is, gives us that information. And that also helps us be able to ensure that the precincting and the districting is accurate, that everybody on that street is in the correct place. So the system also provides us the ability for the, the federal report, the EAC report due every two years to the federal government. It used to be very, very cumbersome, trying to extract data. It, it's sort of built in now, to where the, the last EAC report to the Commission was much more streamlined, I think much more accurate, because reports were actually built into the Avid system to be of assistance to us. There's the ability for over 40 customized and standard reports. It's, it's intuitive. It knows when to do the personal identifying information that by law isn't to be in there, so it intuitively knows to set up a report with just the year of birth, no email addresses, things like that. And then the dashboard to monitor voter activity, to, to let us know when there's notices that need to go out, correspondence that needs to be generated. So I did add a screen about the Electronic Registration Information Center, which is ERIC. That agreement was signed with the Secretary of State's office in 2018. All counties are required to participate in order to be a member state. If one county elects to not participate, then the whole state cannot. It, I know that there's some controversy over this, but the benefit to us is that it is the best resource we have to identify people that move from one state to another. It assists with the deceased, the national change of address data, and voter participation reports. What has been the most valuable to our office is voters that vote in more than one state. Without this tool, it, it has given us the ability to work with other states in a, in a much, we never had done this before, to where it's a coordinated effort through ERIC to be able to reach out, to identify that, well, I have a voter in this state, you appear to have the same voter. And we're able to work with the other states to identify, yes, this is a, we believe, a duplicate voter, or not, and we turn those over to the Secretary of State, that turns those over to the voter fraud unit at the Attorney General's Office. And I, I'm actually working on right now, and that wouldn't have, we wouldn't have known without the ability through ERIC to be able to get that, get that information. So I just wanted to bring that up. ERIC and Avid are not anything, they're not the same acronym being used to do anything nefarious. They're two entirely separate things. So I, in conclusion, it's a very robust system. It's taken a lot of effort on the counties to make it as robust as possible for the state of Arizona. It allows us a complete picture of a voter's record, so that we can ensure the information is maintained. And again, the information is only as good as what we're given. So if you have a deceased person, if you know somebody's moved, it, we would very much like to hear those things, because the, we need that assistance. The resources available to us, especially with deceased voters, they don't all die in Mojave County, and they don't all die in the state of Arizona. If it's international, we really rely on family members to notify us, and let us, allows us to do the necessary statutory requirements to cancel, inactivate, whatever the process may be, so that's it.
Thank you, Recorder Blair. Any questions for Recorder Blair? Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Recorder Blair, do you have any idea why Texas doesn't participate in ERIC?
Texas?
Texas.
I know that there was about five states that have removed themselves. I think, I try not to have a personal opinion. I think as, with everything else, information comes out, I don't know if that information is accurate or not, and other states have made decisions based on information they, they have at the time.
Do you know if California participates?
No, but I am under the understanding that that's a potential for the future. The cost of ERIC is based on how many member states participate. So with the pullout of the, several states, our, our costs increase, but I, I believe that California may participate in the future, but I don't know.
ERIC and Avid are both tied together through a company called Sutherland, so there's a connection between the two companies.
I'm not aware of that.
They're both private companies also. With the presidential preference election coming up, which are party-only elections, that's when we find out that people are, that think they're registered with a party are actually registered as a party not declared. We had trouble in the past with MVD updating people's voter registrations when they went in for MVD services, and re-registering them as PNDs. I know this for a fact, because they did it to my son, who was a Republican precinct committeeman at the time. Are we still seeing that?
No, I think that there's been some work on that, but we also will be sending out the 90-day notices. So if you're Republican, you get a 90-day notice as a Republican. Democrat, if you're an independent, sorry, and a presidential preference, I'm sorry, I was thinking of the primary.
Do they get, do the PNDs get a notice that they're not eligible to vote in the presidential preference election?
I don't know that we do that, do we?
That would be handy for them to know if they thought they were actually registered with the party. Because I, I get a lot of complaints when people show, they want to vote in the, in the PPE, and then here comes Election Day, and they're ineligible to vote because they're not a member of a political party.
We do try and, you know, at least advertise, let people know that, yes, the, and, you know, I think it's confusing for a lot of people. We get a, a lot of questions because...
With open primaries, they're used, a lot of them are used to voting in the primary, but the PPE is different.
I know that the legislature had been looking at independents being able to vote in a presidential preference, but yes, a presidential preference election in March is, you're voting for your party. If you're an independent, you are not tied to a party. So, yeah, a lot of people complain and are disappointed in that, but that's why I guess you have a presidential preference election before the, the primary. It, it's really a party election.
Primaries are really a party thing also, and Arizona has, rather than, some states caucus to elect, so that the parties can choose their candidates, and Arizona is not one of those states. When you're validating signatures on a mail-in ballot, do you have, I know I've looked at some examples of Maricopa's verification, which I thought was rather poor. Hopefully, we have better verification than that. I think they were talking about 21 points of verification. What do we do?
We don't specifically dot by dot. You know, we receive training. My procedure has been, if it's spot-on, accept it. If you have any doubt, it's set aside. If you have any doubt, it's set aside and it goes to another staff member. Sometimes we, everyone in the office, all four, will be looking at that, but we err on the side of caution. We would rather, and that's why we ask for the phone number on the affidavit envelope. Sorry, we don't take that information and do anything with it. It's simply to allow us the ability to contact a voter. And Willie will pick up the phone and try and contact the voter and ask them, did you sign this ballot? How did you sign it? Ask for, you know, distinguishing characteristics on that signature. We do the best that we can, but I think if it's not spot on, and in the system, it may be one signature that we have for a voter, we may have 10. And that signature may, we might kind of question the most recent signature, but it could be spot on with the one we had the year before. So there's, of course, you have to make a decision, but we try and offer training. They're sent to training with a handwriting expert, and then we work within the office. You know, if it's not spot on, then we're asking somebody else to take a second look at those and calling the voter if we have any doubt.
Does state statute tell you which signature to use? If you've got, are you allowed to go back and look at that one?
Oh, yes.
At the last election, they don't, you're not required to use the original signature?
Well, they usually are off their, you know, their voter registration system. I can't tell you off the top of my head, but statutorily, there are certain signatures that we are allowed to capture.
Okay.
So I want to say, I believe the 90-day notice is one when they, when we send that out and it's returned to us by the voter. I believe that that is one of the signatures by statutory, by statute that we're allowed to capture into the system.
Okay. When you vote at the poll, there's certain forms of ID that are acceptable. When you registered to vote, you had to prove that you're a citizen.
Yes.
When you vote at the poll, there's certain forms of ID that are acceptable to prove that you are you. On a mail ballot, how does that work?
We, you've already registered to vote. We're sending the ballot upon the voter's request. We're sending the ballot to the address that the voter has asked us to send it to. And they've already shown identification at the time of registering. And then we check the signature when it comes back to us.
The legislature was talking about making it include another document. I don't know that that actually went anywhere, but apparently not.
For what purpose? I'm sorry.
To prove that that person is really that person on the mail ballot.
I'm not aware of that.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
I think it'd be a great idea if we just showed ID, but...
Thank you, ma'am.
Other comments? Thank you for your presentation today.
Thank you.
We're adjourned.